Through this contract that you have before you. Primarily, the second meeting, the thing that we discussed the most is once we become an anchor school or school of choice, is discussing busing options, um, once we get to that. And at this point in time, what was discussed is we do have a pickup point on Ryder Corner Road and I forget the side street.
Uh, Old Springfield.
Old Springfield Road. And right now, we can take on twelve students on that, and that would be no cost to the title for you because the buses are to go in there and turning around. And what we provided them with is two options. Uh, once we become a school of choice, and if people are requesting, um, a bus and we have to provide them, what would the cost be? Uh, for that, as well as where would the place be where we pick them up? And that was discussed, um, at the school, uh, in Croydon. And the, um, we gave them two prices. One was if they had twelve students or under, and then one price if there's twelve students or more. Um, and those prices were, I'm gonna round it out, fifteen thousand and twenty-five thousand.
Fourteen thousand and twenty-five.
Yes. So, the, the hard part for us on this is we do not know, one, how many more students will come. We could say, I don't have options that we go to Newport, Montessori, and I think there's a couple other places that students go.
KU A and, uh.
Yes. So, it's, uh, unknown for us right now how many students, uh, potentially will come. The school board feels that we'll definitely get some more students once this is open. And one of the areas that they felt was keeping some students from coming there is busing. Uh, so we've picked a magic number of, I believe, fifteen students.
So, two more, two more than the current have, have enrolled right now, would have had enrolled next year, which they have thirteen, one graduating, leaving twelve. Uh, so fourteen is a magic.
I mean, if they hit that threshold, then we could provide a bus, uh, to Croydon. Um, so that's where we are at that point right now. I think it's exciting. Um, I think in terms of the amount that we're charging for tuition is, uh, very similar to towns around us. And I feel that we have a great opportunity to generate some income by getting students from Croydon. Um, that will utilize mostly the busing services as one avenue to get over here. Anything I'm missing there?
Um, so just to back on the bus piece. So, Croydon's responsible by RSA to provide transportation to students, um, K through W. So, they're responsible for transportation regardless. We try to offer them, as Ed broke it down, I think, a fair opportunity. They currently, as I said, have thirteen. They were projecting anywhere from potentially ten to twelve more kids next year that they feel are, uh, in, in other schools right now that, that, that's stepping out. I added, um, in, in the back of that packet, you showed a list of their breakdown of kids. I probably should have deleted all their names, so I apologize for that. But the gray levels are in, and they're thinking that any, any student that's in grade six, seven, eight, uh, potentially in any of those other schools, may make a decision if they're coming into high school or going into middle school to make that jump at that time in transitioning over to Sonoma, which does make sense. Most kids in high school, once they get into high school, um, they have a tendency to stay where their friends are in the programs that they're in. Tara and I sat down and did a lot of work on special ed. Um, the special ed piece that's in there right now is, is identical to the special ed agreement that we have within our tuition process. So, what this does is it allows us to keep our tuition at this number, and they pay for the services of students who need special ed services here at school. One of the things I tried to do in this contract is because it's a three-year contract, which I don't think is a whole lot of time, um, but it did, does give us the flexibility to increase tuition prices, buses, bus prices and special ed prices every year of this contract over the next three years of this working place. Tried to give you as much flexibility as possible. Uh, Croydon did have a board meeting last night to unanimously pass this, um, and they are hoping that we can do the same. Um, but that's a fine track in front of you. Hope you any other data that you found in there is helpful as you deliberate over the decision.
So, does our thirteen students that are from Croydon now have already committed to coming next year because they had to commit by May fifteenth?
So, they, they, they can commit over the summertime right now with tuition process. The way, the way the May, May first thing is there is so that Croydon has an understanding of what potentially is coming over. So, we're accelerating our timeline. Uh, I think if you, I think you passed in May the tuition, um, for the next year. I think we typically do that in May. We probably will do that just a little bit earlier as we're coming out of budget season. But we don't have, and Sean, you put speakers to anybody, we don't have a lot of turnover. Kids are here, they have a tendency to stay here as well.
I would agree with that typically, yeah.
Has there been, uh, a risk benefit analysis done to evaluate, well, I mean, just risk benefit to the district for that?
Uh, Carrie, could you maybe break that down into something more specific, that the risk and the benefit?
Yeah, what, what risk are we absorbing, what's the benefit to us? I mean, I, I, um, very much in favor of looking at the tuition in option. Um, and this has come about really quickly. And so, I'm just, I'm just curious as to how this was vetted in terms of sort of risk benefit to the district? Is there anything that we need to be concerned about? Uh, anything on the radar? For me in particular, just looking at the fact that we're signing onto a three-year agreement out of the gate, that worries me. Without really knowing how this is all gonna shake out.
I think, uh, one of the biggest concerns we had when we sat down was the cost of special ed because that one in itself can, can be a large chunk of money. And I believe through, if you're looking through the contract and the negotiations and the way Russ has that set up, this is gonna cover us. It puts the burden back on to Croydon to cover that expense, uh, in terms of risks. In terms of benefits is, I think, um, you know, having the income, uh, from the tuitioned students is gonna be very helpful, especially to the district where we have some people concerned with the enrollment here, uh, at Sonoma. Uh, and then I think if you look again, that we have abilities to, even though it's a three-year contract, we do have the abilities to, if we're seeing something happening over the year in those certain areas, we can call that back in and have another meeting to, to discuss it. Saying that about the rest.
Yep, certainly can. Um, so, benefit obviously, I think there's a, maybe a bigger potential or better potential to continue to attract more kids from Croydon, which continues to increase tuition revenue, uh, back to the district, I think. And also, adding more students to our middle and high school population allows us to continue to maintain teachers, a variety of programs, a variety of academic levels, uh, where we're not looking to maybe statute cut teachers or cut programs based upon our enrollment. The, the risk factor, so, Croydon's done this, I think, as Ed said, three or four different times. Uh, the risk factor that I think that anyone would be concerned about outside of special ed is behavior. And we spoke of that at our meetings, uh, about behavior of students. And they would be, they are always going to be a Croydon student, but they fall under, um, what we run here, what our expectations here, not only academically, but behaviorally. And as a Sonoma student had an issue with behavior, we have a process in which we would go through to deal with that behavior. At what point in time, uh, we decided that because of behavior, we were no longer able to manage or, or house that student? Croydon is responsible, just like they would be for our district placement of a special ed student, to find appropriate placement of that student. Again, whether that's court involved, whether that's discipline, whether that's special ed. So, I, I think the, the risk, if there is one, um, would be, we don't always know what's walking in the door, but I don't think we always, we have a somewhat good idea now what's walking in the door because we interview them. Um, Sean has said this many times, we don't say no a whole lot, um, because generally, kids wanna be here because they know their expectations. Our expectations haven't changed. I think there are kids in Croydon from what we heard that would love to come here, but transportation is preventing them from coming here. We are who we are, our expectations don't, don't change, our opportunities for kids don't change. And, you know, I guess that would be, the only risk facing Carrie is we no longer necessarily have that initial face-to-face, you know, hour meeting with the principal, um, that we get right now with the tuition agreements.
Why, um, well, how many schools currently has Croydon actually had on?
So, I think they said four, I think, actually five, so they're on that page, that page in there. So, it's, it's an online school, KU A, Montessori, Newport.
I just saw kids.
Yeah, that's, so those are the one, they're, they're.
They're, they're, so they all have anchor?
Yeah. And so, what Croydon is trying to do is just give as many options to their kids because they have a choice in this.
If, if transportation is the issue, because they're anchored in so many other schools, why wouldn't we just offer transportation? So that we can still keep our face-to-face interview and be able to.
Because I think what they're.
Vent it.
Yeah, yeah, so for us, sure, that's an easy out. For them, they also want an easy in.
So, I, I have a concern about that, and I also have a concern about, how many kids have we actually had tuitioned in that have been special ed in the past?
Um, I don't know the number, but we, we have taken kids that are on IP, so it comes from other, other tuitioning districts outside of Croydon and Croydon.
So, I, I do have a concern about, because I am a small business owner, I often work when everybody's busy. And we do have a new team this year in special ed, is how are we gonna keep up with this bill by the end of?
So, we, we keep up to it. Um, part of that, a lot of that, there's a medicaid please, part of that is in the IP, they're written so many next hours. Uh, and we provide those services, and those are really easily trackable hours based upon the IP and how it's written. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So, we, we bill special ed services quarterly.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
We bill special ed services quarterly.
Yep.
And, um, all of our teachers track the services that they've delivered, all of our related services, people track those services. So, we can pull those logs, um, and, and match them up with the IP and bill based on those logs.
I have the same concern, I guess, to some extent, because right now, it feels like we have a lot of control. We talked in the past, when we talked about, um, tuitioning in students and the possibility of having transportation routes to go out to Goshen, to the Croydon, and whether that would help to bolster our enrollment. And up to now, I don't think we've considered that, or maybe there's some reasons why we haven't considered that. But if that's really the differentiator, it seems like maybe that would be the place to start, as opposed to going to this all-in position where we're locked in for three years.
I don't know if I have the, I don't, I don't have a whole lot of stake in sort of your direction here. Um, the, we've, we've never offered a trans, a bus to any other district, no, nobody has ever asked for one. Croydon right now could put twelve kids on Ryder Corner Road and Old Springfield Road and come to our school, but parents don't, have never asked that, Croydon have never asked that. I think what Croydon's saying is if you give us another, if we give enough kids to you to give another bus, we think we're gonna be able to give you more kids to increase your revenue, but also give our kids better access to your school where they may not do that right now. Again, I don't know if just saying, here's a bus, how we make our money back on that bus, if we don't have some stipulation on when and how we offer a bus. Right now, as tuition, we don't have to have a stipulation, we just tuition you in and we don't have to provide a bus. They're responsible for the bus, or their parents are responsible to get it there. So, we're not really on the hook for transportation right now, and if we wanted to come on the hook, I'm not sure how we determine how we're gonna cost that back out to Croydon, or if it's worth our time to cost that back out to Croydon.
Do we know if Newport provides Croydon with a bus? And that's why they're the biggest, the other bigger one of where they're finess go?
I believe they said that Newport had, uh, like an in-town spot, if I remember correctly.
Seven, eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, very similar to what they had proposed with us.
Um, I have a question about section seven A in the contract too, about the Croydon School Board being able to discuss matters, um, about curriculum, financial matters, all these. What, um, empowerment or decision-making or influence do we envision the Croydon School Board having with us? If any, has that been thought through?
Yeah, that was a concern of mine too, actually, because, uh, I mean, we know in different places, different school boards have different ideas about the role a school board should play and what it shouldn't play, and so, how does that?
So, they don't have, they don't have any authority over you whatsoever in how do you run your policies, how do you run your curriculum, how you run your offerings, how you run your teachers, how you dismiss teachers. Um, it says, I believe the word is, is, uh, discuss. They certainly come and say, we think that your policy on athletic participation with having kids pass for subjects is, is outrageous and we don't like that. And we can say, well, thank you very much, we appreciate you discussing that, but you don't have the right to change our policies.
So, they have no, no.
They have no seat at the table or it comes to anything that this, the authority that this board has. Oh, God.
I think that just opens up an avenue for a line of communications if they have a concern that can bring before us as a board. I agree.
Why, why are we engaging or why are we offering a three-year contract with an automatic?
That is what they proposed to us. And so, I believe it says it's the end of this year, we can tell them we do not wish to negotiate, or we should make the contract after, um, three years. Uh, that's something that I think they're just looking to not have to do something year after year after year after year, which I get, if we were on the other side. I would certainly wanna tie us into something that has a little stability.
So, can we break it though after a year if it's not working out?
You can break it after a year, but you would fulfill the last two years of your contract.
Do we have any grades maybe done with the project that would be detrimental that we don't have enough room for them?
So, I think in, in, in your packet, Amanda, towards the very back, here's a breakdown.
Yeah.
Of the kids that are coming up, and you can see those are relatively small numbers. Um, and even the kids that, again, if all fifty, I believe it's fifty-four or fifty-seven kids that are currently out in other schools came back, it certainly wouldn't.
Where's the, we saw them?
Yeah.
They only start coming to elementary school, fifth grade, so.
Yeah.
I think we have two right now. It could be three.
How many kids do you have in each fifth grade class approximately?
Sixteen? I have to check, one second.
And do you max your classes of twenty, twenty-two, eighteen?
Russ?
Sixth grade?
I mean, no, do we max them out ever, like, what do we consider?
Well, they have a policy about students per classroom, and it goes different for.
Yeah, it goes up, it's like twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, somewhere in that range.
But it, I al, it also does concern me that if we do get, let's say, Croydon gets, because I do know that Croydon is growing, because we do quite a lot of work with Croydon. In three years, what happens if we have to have resources to, because we can't deny students, you know? I feel like there should be a cap somewhere so that it's up to us whether we can say, hey, you know, we can't take tech to the greater because we don't have the resources for it. Then all of a sudden, we're on the hook for, you know, that, we have to educate the children.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a great question, Andy, because I think the idea of the three-year agreement and looking to get out, so I certainly, I don't think it's gonna happen, but you would know better as, as a, as a person in construction. You know, I don't see them putting five hundred people in their community over the next three years.
No, I don't either, but.
So, I think, but I think we would negotiate that potentially in our next three years. If we saw some of this uptick at the top of the boat, then as we go, we negotiate potentially in two years from now, we say, hey, we're concerned about, we've seen a three percent growth in population in Croydon, we're now concerned about what this may look like in another three years. Or to that point, and if we really are concerned after the three years and don't like it, we just say at the end of one, again, we're not interested in doing this anymore. We'll go back to our old ways of tuition. So, we're not, we're in three years, but we're not looking past that three years, and we have to break pretty quickly, um, on whether we feel this is gonna be successful or based upon living in this thing, we feel some of our needs might be moving forward.
I guess we spent some time looking at the total amount of students they have, which is not a lot. Um, if, if every student was to come for each grade, I thought we discussed that it wouldn't put us in that situation where they had to add new teachers or add a classroom or anything at the current amount of kids that they have. Uh, so, we looked at that three years, and if there is, you know, X amount of kids in, uh, fourth grade, that means three years from now, we could run it through two years in fifth grade and sixth grade dealing with this amount of students. And obviously, I think they, there's a lot of families over there that have a stronger connection with Newport, you know, just sports, different things like that, football, stuff like that that we don't offer, which is one of the things that reflect in how the kids become this direction.
I do give you the other piece to that, to, again, as a question, so, if they, if next year, they send us twelve additional kids at a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, um, you know, if that continues to go up, do we continue to make it? And so, do I, that's enough to offset a part-time teacher, supplement services? Um, I think that's something we need to continue to look at. If truly that number of students coming here, um, increased, it is going to steadily or rapidly increase. I also think, like you said, Andy, we can negotiate, uh, um, our amount of tuition every year in this coming three-year agreement. So, you know, if we felt an influx and said, jeez, you just gave us a hundred and forty kids next year, and we were only expecting twelve, we had to go higher, uh, we're gonna look to raise our tuition rate because we have the right to do that.
And they would be bound by that number, whatever we said?
They're bound by that number that we have to give them, I believe, before May first of next year.
Yeah, so, for some reason, they did add thirty kids, and we have to add a, a sixth-grade teacher. That was one of the reasons that that is negotiated every year, so we could adjust for that issue.
Well, and I think it's even more than just classroom teachers, you know, we just talked about adjustment counselors and guidance counselors and your specials. I mean, I don't know you're building well enough, you guys would get the ball. How many, how many new students do you welcome in a typical year? And if we added twelve and fifteen more, what's other stuff that we're not thinking of that could potentially cause conversations? Do we have twelve extra Chromebooks, John, maybe, you know, I mean, a little facetious, but, you know, I think it's just more than just a, a classroom teacher. I think there's a lot of pieces to it.
Yeah, it's not facetious though, because I think there was something in the contract about equipment costs too, right? So, that, I think we bear the cost of that.
I believe that's correct, and we're calling.
Sure, I mean, if the community were one-on-one Chromebooks, we have Chromebooks within our school, we, you know, have always bought additional Chromebooks. Um, but, again, there's a, there's a revenue side of this that we can't forget. Meaning, I have thirteen kids right now, we're collecting revenue. And so, what we're saying is, some of that revenue may have to be spent on Chromebooks, if need be. Um, you know, we buy forty Chromebooks for twenty thousand dollars, I can't imagine, um, you know, a revenue of twenty, of forty thou, twenty thousand dollars, although a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars potentially out of twelve kids, again, we're still making a lot of revenue off of buying twenty Chromebooks, forty Chromebooks, whatever it is.
You are building administrators, have any comments or questions or thoughts, because you kind of have to live with this?
I, yeah, I think one of the, the hierarchy is that I, I agree with Mr. Holden, I think we're always looking to try to get tuition students. And so, those are, uh, we have, we actually have a lot of managers here, and we really like our tuition students, so I think that's there. I think the worry a little bit, um, you know, the man everything's like, well, but sometimes those unseen things sometimes of like, how much time do they use in school council? How much time do they use in student council? Those things that, those, those things can be hard to gauge sometimes, and those things can be, you know, but it's more of an unknown. So, I, you know, personally, I'd like to be processed, I think it's some information and things like that, but I also understand the desire to get more students as well.
Do we know how many tuitioned students we have signed up already?
District one, uh, all, all.
Yeah, all in.
Now, it's simply that this is what we roll in, so I think actually, the most kids we know right now, because they really put the, sort of the screw stream is Goshen. Most of the Goshen kids that are here have continued to be out.
We have a lot of freshmen coming in next year, like a lot more than typical, which is, which I don't, I don't see the negative. Like, it does not disturb me if they come back more. Um, we have a lot of youth kids who are coming in next year. Um, Leinster's always an interesting one, so some of you could get a lot of Leinster kids, some of you don't. Uh, next year, this seems to be a perfect storm, where I think we have like three or four Leinster kids, uh, three or four Unity kids. So, I, I really think our tuition numbers in that next year's not, he's going to that grade, so we approach it double digits.
Wow.
But which, by the way, that doesn't, I wouldn't say in any way, shape or form I have that. Like, if I had three more come in, I'd be like, yeah, let's add, you know, let's, let's add three more. Because I think we're sitting at thirty, uh, you know, I, I think we could probably lose one or two, that would probably close closer to thirty-eight, which is, you know, I love to be quite frank in the local, so, I don't see that as an idea, but we do have a lot of tuition spending.
And then obviously, moving forward, you know, we're having, uh, students come from Croydon, we might not be able to accept, you know, other tuition students if we were to get a high number or something. Because right now, there's an interview process, we could interview in Leinster where we could say we were full. I think, uh, Montessori's going through that now, and they're, they're saying we're full, we cannot accept them anymore.
Yeah, I would hate to be, you know, I would hope that would never happen, right? I would hate to be a place where we were turning back a Leinster student, let's put that way. Yeah, a Leinster student. Because we had to take it for this, and I, I don't, I don't envision that happening. I really don't envision that happening, um, but I would hate for that to happen.
Right.
You know, and why is there, I mean, I get like, so it wouldn't become an interview, but there's so much value in, why isn't that Croydon family still requested or required to come and meet with us? Like, let us see where you come to school, you know, I enrolled my kids, I had to do it. I think, so we could still get a little bit of that meet you piece?
Yeah, I, so, I, I, let me, let me.
And I'm sure some of you would, yeah.
So, we certainly can ask anybody coming into our building, whether it's a tuition or a tuition agreement, to come and, and meet with our administration or walk our building. What the, what this agreement does is, you can't say no after that meeting. That's all.
I, I wish it was a one-year agreement, to be honest with you, to see how it went. I'm a little nervous about three years because we've never done this before. And I'm really nervous because we just got this agreement, we just got this contract, you know, yesterday. And I don't think it's been, we've had time to really process it once we're here.
You're certainly well in motion, and we could run a, do a separate proposal or a different option on the contract.
Would it be unreasonable to do like a five-year rather than get locked into three years and just?
Then you, uh, you as a board, you can take whatever direction you like. Um, I would, I would just say, if we were looking for the same thing, what would we hope that come out of this, be not gonna give us three year? Maybe it's, uh, compromise in the middle, Andy, Andy, that we're gonna take you for the year, but the end of this year, um, we're gonna enter that twelve-month separation period where now it's just two years. Or at the end of the first year, make it determined if we wanna add an additional year or two going forward. So, instead of going to a three, now you've got to a two. Again, or you can deny the contract, or we could go back and ask them if they like to do one year. I'm not sure there's a value in it for them necessary for one year. But that, that's not my decision, that's theirs.
I felt through talking with them and through the negotiation period, that it's gonna be a little experience, and I don't think we're gonna see a. to be a little experience, and I don't think we're going to see a large rush of students coming in over the very first year. I think it would be something that would take a long time for the community to see, see the busing and going, would give us in that three-year period. For us, voting, how this is working for in year two, we'd be looking at it saying, you know, things have to change, or we're starting to see issues that need to be addressed before we would enter into a second contract. That was just kind of my opinion when I was talking with the students.
I mean, if we're not going to gain, if we feel like we're not going to gain a tremendous amount of kids for the first few years, I mean, I would be in favor of offering Croydon students transportation, like that's in this contract, and see if we get any other students interested in coming to Saffron before we enter into a three-year agreement.
The concern about that is right now, if we say we would offer that to them, and could be off on this, but discussing, right now, they have to pay for their transportation here. I'm concerned if we offer transportation and that it's only the kids that are currently coming here which have to provide that on their own dime, we could end up going backwards.
Well, it's my understanding that 12 kids at the pickup zone are zero costed there, correct?
If they get to that swap base.
And that's all we're offering in this contract, unless we go over for them, correct?
Right.
Why can't we offer them this transportation contract without being another anchor school for them?
You certainly can do that. I think what Ed's saying is that the 12, the 12 at Rider Corner Road don't come to any cost to us whatsoever.
Correct.
Right? More than that, so the 13, 14 kid, what we're saying, if you get past the 12, we're then going to give you a bus, potentially which could cost us 14 or 25,000 dollars a year to provide that bus. To maybe, well, 14 if it's one or two students. If it's more than, I think that's 15 passenger bus, so it would be a small bus, then it goes to that 25 then because we have to send this every month. So, we'd be giving up some revenue for this to provide transportation. Again...
Why would we though if we offered them this contract for transportation? Without being an anchor school? We wouldn't be giving up any?
You'd be giving up the money if you didn't have the guarantee of the revenue.
Well, we're not guaranteed the revenue because they go to any other...
But we're not guaranteeing them that bus until they give us that number of students.
So why couldn't we offer that portion on travel? Is what I'm saying.
You certainly can, but again, are you going to give this for two and then we're going to provide the bus?
Well, no, I think it needs to be outlined just like this piece of the contract, correct?
Sure.
I mean, that would be an ideal situation, I feel, for us to start this agreement. That way, we could see how it works, see how many kids are interested, because the kids have a choice no matter what, right? And then we're not locked in for a three-year deal and we can kind of feel out how many kids we might get. I mean, that's how I feel.
Sure. You let me know, and I'll be happy to speak to the superintendent and let him know whatever the flavor of the board is. Again, part of this for Croydon and then for Kalamazoo, I think, is so the kids can get here, not only from a transportation standpoint, but can get, can walk, go, I want to go to Saffron, and guess what? I get to go to Saffron.
Yeah, I have to say, I'm kind of in the same boat here. I'm really uncomfortable with the three-year contract. If it's really about the transportation, I would prefer that we look for a solution that gives us a little bit of a stepping stone towards something maybe longer term. But I feel like I'm not, I'm not really confident that we've fully vetted all angles of this to really understand what we're signing up for at this point, so I would prefer a little bit more of a stepwise approach and something that de-risks it for us a little bit more, is my feeling.
Here are our other concerns, I guess we'll vote on the motion as I run. To be like those, all those in favor of accepting the contract with Croydon, say aye. Trust me.
We're just voting how it has is.
Yes.
If there's any changes.
Yes.
All those opposed?
Aye, nay, whatever, I'm not sure what to say.
So how do we get to the point where we basically make a counter?
Can I make an amendment to it?
Amendment to how?
You want to make an amendment to the contract?
Yes.
You can certainly propose one.
Okay, I'd like to propose an amendment to the contract that we are not an anchor school for Croydon and we offer them the transportation portion of this as a one-year contract with the option to enter a contract to be an anchor school after we've fully got this, because I just feel like, I don't have enough, I haven't had enough time to really get through it.
So do we want a second thought so we can discuss?
I'll second Andy's motion.
So Russ, right now, there's 12, 12 students who are accepting?
Well, they have enrolled 12 students right now. The way the contract is currently written is that we honored that 12 students and said if we received two more tuition students and we would provide an additional bus at no cost to them to their school, whether that be a small or big bus, two kids gave us that ability to provide them a bus, whatever that bus need was.
And if they get over, if they get over the two, what is in that? I'm just trying to remember. Say, for some good reason, 30 kids will come, it's still going to be a large bus?
It would be the 51, I believe, so we felt like it was covered. And again, that option of that free 12 is always there, so some kids may still want to go to that free 12 bus.
Can I just get Croydon, because I'm not sure, I heard that's right. Did I hear that we've already got 12? And we would need two more? And with two more, then we would run a bus to Croydon to their school?
The two students, if they were to come, would, in theory, pay for the cost of that bus on their tuition rate. So basically, what would happen is if two more students did come, we would then provide a bus, which of the 12 coming, say, some may still choose to drive here on their own with their parents, and we may end up shipping three, four, five, or six kids from the location of the school. But that's the point of the other two, was to pay for the bus. If all the ones that are coming now, that there is no cost, they would have an option for that bus as well, covered by the two tuition students. So if we gained two tuition students, we would have no more revenue coming in, it would be a wash for the bus provided to Croydon.
Okay. I don't think I'm comfortable with that either. I don't really fully understand the ROI on this. I think I need to see something on the numbers to understand the return on investment to get us to a quiet place where it makes sense to do through that, even with just a transportation-only contract. I would favor a transportation-only contract, but I don't have my head around what those numbers need to look like to make sense.
Yeah, I don't know the backup on it, but it sounds like it would cost about one student's tuition, right?
So, if you look at your packet, I think the very last page is a breakdown from Brendan.
Right, which is 14,670?
Yep.
And tuition's 15,000, 16,000.
15,500, 16,000, right, 15, 16,000.
Yeah, so, it's basically, we're going to get the revenue from that one, one tuition, basically, is going through transportation, basically.
Over and above the 12.
Right. Yep.
Well, if it was, if it goes over the 12 students and the students that right now are not being charged, so if all of a sudden, we have the 12 kids coming, choose to take the bus, and we hit the magic number of 13, for more than 12 students, it's going to cost the district 25,650. So, all the 12 that are coming for free now, say, we choose the bus to be picked up at the school, it would take two more students, because it's more than 12, to cover the 25,000. Because we would have to hire another, and we would have to hire another driver. Currently, under the 12, we can cover that with what we have. Over 12, it would require hiring another driver, and that's why the rate jumps from the 14 to the 45. So, we...
I might want to amend my... I'm sorry, but I'm not comfortable with that either.
Does this not include using bus three still? For no added charge? How many kids can go on?
I thought we...
Bus three is actually a better quarter. Is that the 12?
No, so 12 is always there, right? So 12's a constant in Rider Corner Road.
On that?
If they went to 14, according to what's in the agreement, then we would say, here's your $14,000 bus, we're picking it up, because we gave us two more. Now, if that two more, again, in their head, they're saying, we think two's going to be 12 or 14, well, okay, that's 20, maybe you can still fit on that bus. But if the original 12 and now this 20, 40 came together, it now needs a bigger bus because it's bigger than our 20-passenger bus, now we're going to send a 51, which makes it 25. So it really wouldn't be, the differential there, Andy, that you're looking at is how many kids fit on a small bus with just 20? And do they bring, do the 12 kids that are currently here all jump on the small bus? Or do they continue to drive? Or, do 12 different kids jump on the small bus, which gives us a net plus 10 tuition because we needed two to cover the cost of the bus?
Do we send a small bus or a big bus to Rider Corner right now?
Big bus, it's our...
It's our, the big one?
So how many kids can we pick up at Rider Corner?
12.
There's only 12 slots here, no?
There's only 12 slots in there.
The bus, the bus stop is literally at my house.
At your house.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was wondering for a while, why are three cars when you have some at your house?
You were talking about the less than 12 is 12 additional to the 12 of the ride.
Yeah.
It would actually be 13 to 24.
That's small bus.
Then to go, or 23. 24 to 36 is what really we're looking at, cost-wise, for that 14,670 and 25,650.
Right, to drive.
Okay, all right.
And then how do you sort of guarantee that all those kids actually take the bus? That we're not like running a road to pick up one?
Again, there's a piece here that has to go, again, with the legislation of the state that says schools in towns are required to bus students in grades K through eight. So, they're not counting their high school kids right now, because they're not required to count their high school kids. What they could say, and this is a Croydon issue, we have 30 kids that want to go out and take that bus up to school. Eight of those 30 kids are in high school. We're going to tell them, you're responsible for your own transportation, so that I can put the 22 kids on that are in grades five through eight onto that bus and we only get charged, or we pick up that charge for them. So there's a Croydon issue where they have to delineate, based upon what's available for seats, where they put their kids on buses, or provide other options for kids, again, if they could go out and hire a private provider.
And not to confuse the issue, but only because this would be something new, are we setting an interesting precedent for our other schools that come to us, or are we not worried about that?
We don't, uh, did you say transportation? I'm sorry.
First, yes, so it's like, unity's going to come to us and say, hey, do we have to handle this?
No, we have not sent a bus out to anyone else. It's something this board has certainly said, if there's a need for that, no one's ever come to us with that need. I think Sean talked about unity, you know, potentially having a few kids here this year coming into ninth grade, well, you know, those kids don't have those licenses, but in two years from now, when we get their license, they also jump on the counter and drive to school together.
Currently, we do offer a drop-off for pickup points for students from other schools besides this. And right now, because there's room on the bus, the transportation director said it's not an issue. If it becomes to a point where there is so many kids being dropped off from other schools that affect our students, then that would have to change. But currently, right now, we do have the availability to pick up kids from other schools. For instance, Brook Road and, uh, Brooklyn, all three, there's Sula Restaurant, I believe is one area that some kids are picked up. I think she said it's popular.
Like some students from Goshen or something like that?
I believe so. So, are you, you would draw your amendment, I believe?
Yeah, I'd like to present it.
So where does the board see that, at this point, Russ and I go to talk to the superintendent?
I'm, after talking about the bus, I'm fearful of hiring another bus driver, just because we're short bus drivers now for our own school.
So do you think five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think for me, I, oh, sorry, Andy.
No, go ahead, please.
I was just going to say, I think for me, I would prefer to see a little bit more investigation and vetting of this, to dig a little bit of deeper, to see where we need to land, make it favorable and good for us.
Can you explain that more to me, because I'm a little confused? Vetting the what? What areas would you like us to vet into?
I mean, I think the three years is part of it, for me, personally. I think that's a big commitment. You know, I think what Russ said earlier makes sense, a little more sense. You know, give us a year, let's see how it goes. And then, Russ, I'm going to say it differently than you did, but you have two years, but after one year, you can say, okay, one more year and then we're done. We've talked about contracts like that before, I don't really understand how they work, but giving us a little more chance, three years is a lot different than two, which sounds stupid, but it is, it is.
So are you recommending if we amended this contract we currently have from three years to two years, that would be a direction?
I would think that's one piece that would help me get through it a little better. I still don't, you know, the transportation piece too, I just can't quite work my head through.
So I think that what I'm hearing is that we should, I'll just contact the superintendent and say at this time, the board didn't feel like it had enough time and continued having questions to be able to enter this into this agreement for this upcoming school year. And we certainly would be willing to continue to sit and continue this conversation with Croydon, flush a little more of this out, and potentially see if we can bring something back for the following school.
Yeah, I think it's important not to rush it because this bigger picture, this could be the template, you know, for agreements that we have with other districts in the future and, uh, there's just a lot of moving parts to it and, you know, they just got this to us, you know, within the last day or so. So, having that deadline of having to commit for next year is making it difficult. I think that's really the biggest thing, we just haven't had enough time to work through it properly, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to spend a little more time on it and understand a little bit more about the transportation and what we can do to protect ourselves if we can't provide transportation, because sometimes I know it's hard to get transportation for our own kids.
Now, was it concerning that I had, but the transportation director sat down and actually did not have those concerns at all with the spare buses we have, with the people we have, and this weekend, that should come across with any concerns?
No, and just to clarify, and I hear you, and I think I know where I can go with this superintendent, the transportation that's in the contract is only in the contract for the upcoming year.
Yeah.
Just point it clearly, right? So we're not locked into year two or three. Again, it's intentional so that we can determine what that looks like and let the sum, being so big, because we may not be able to say 12's the number, 14's the number, we need to determine what the number is or if there is even a number to go with. Or you could say, we're going to send 50 kids over to Montessori next year because they have room for us, and now we're left with three kids, we're certainly, we're going to be on the hook, nor is this contract right now the way it's written. Leave us on the hook in year two and three for transportation. That's a negotiated out as a term. That's a negotiated, oh, as a term.
Here's my thought, for what it's worth. I would hate to lose an opportunity, I think, no matter how the contracts are written, there's always gonna be a learning curve. I would love to see if, if the board's not in favor of a three-year contract, maybe try a one-year contract, so we could be, we could, we could look at those things, or concerns if any, to then work on a contract at a later, later time. I think part of this, you're gonna have to vet actually having something in place to educate yourself on. So, I would be, I would hate to lose an opportunity, and I would be in favor of maybe just keeping what we have, and going to a one-year contract? And then that gives us some education and meat over the next year, to see how things are going, to better prepare a lot of the contract if needed. If they'd accept it.
Sure, and maybe you can pull out any part of that contract and any sort of amendment that you're on, you're not feeling comfortable. Again, if we were uncomfortable, especially, I would say, we don't feel like we can, oh, we can't say it, I'm sorry, it's kind of simple.
I was gonna say, well, that, that was maybe a comfortable.
I don't know if you have anything to say. Uh, we're not, we're not gonna provide transportation. Like, we, we decided we can agree to this contract of one year, two year, but we feel at this point in time, we're not ready to, to have transportation as part of this.
Yeah, keep right at corner, whatever limitations we have over there. You know, even section four enrollment, students from Croydon enrolled in Sunapee during the term shall be allowed to continue attending and graduate from Sunapee after the end of the term. Does that mean, even if we cancel the contract, if we get fifteen kids next year, we have to keep them until they graduate?
I think if you, I think if you keep reading that, that's a wrong drop, but we've changed our language to say.
Oh, my God.
You can continue to graduate here as a tuition student. So, outside of this agreement, so if you're a ninth grader who came here, this gets finished in three years, you were then, see, going in your senior year, if we broke the contract, you go back to being a tuition student, which means you'd have to go through our tuition process, I believe it's even spelled out, as our policy, J, D, A.
So they have to come back as a tuition student?
Yeah, so, we, we wouldn't want them not to be able to finish their high school career, but they would come as a tuition student, not as a tuition agreement student.
It's gonna be possible to just do a one-year contract versus, as you said something before about one year and then another twelve months, which really makes it two years, I mean.
I mean, you all can propose anything you like, and I'd be happy to see if they'd be interested.
I think a real new would give us the education and the vetting that you're looking for. More so than us sitting here talking about, you know, talking through different areas that we just don't have the education. The biggest thing is gonna be if we did a one-year, we could quickly see, you know, the amount of students. And talking with the bus director, I have no concerns. If we hit that student mark, then it's covered through the tuition to pay for that bus.
So let anyone come in, if we just did a one-year, and we decided we're done with this, that's the end of it. They could keep coming here as any other tuition student, they.
No bus.
Have to, you know. Interview with the administration, the building, and, you know, their place would, you know, be guaranteed necessarily, but it'll just be like it was before, basically.
I'll just, for out there, I'll make a motion to amend the contract to a one-year term versus the three-year term, as would. Hear anybody second? Hear enough?
I guess I'll second it, so that we can have a discussion.
Okay.
How about that?
Here, second, and now it's open for discussion.
So how does everyone feel about that?
I feel like I haven't had time to digest this. Like, if, if, just from all the questions that were popped up tonight, brought more questions to me, that's, that's my concern. And, I would feel a lot more comfortable with a transportation contract, but I still feel like I, I need to look at it more. I'm sorry, just don't. I'm, I don't know if I'm, I, I'm.